Good evening, I have seven o'clock and I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you Mayor, Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum Mayor.
Thank you. So this evening, just a little background, many faiths have an ordained position of deacon. In the Catholic Church, there are two types of deacons. I have a brother who's a permanent deacon. He will not likely ever be a priest since he is married. The Catholic Church also has transitional deacons. These ordained men who by the grace of God will be ordained priests in the near future. Tonight, to lead us in prayer, we have Deacon Luke Meyerhoff, who was ordained a transitional deacon last May. And hopefully, Lord willing, he will be ordained a priest next May. He has been assigned to serve at Church of the Resurrection for the summer and returns to seminary sometime in August. So Deacon Meyerhoff, please come to the podium and lead us in prayer tonight.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. A reading from the Holy Gospel according to Matthew. As Jesus got into a boat, his disciples followed him. Suddenly, a violent storm came upon the sea, so that the boat was being swamped by waves. But he was asleep. They came and woke him, saying, "Lord, save us. We are perishing." He said to them, "Why are you terrified, oh you of little faith?" Then he got up, rebuked the winds in the sea, and there was a great calm. The men were amazed and said, "What sort of man is this, whom even the winds in the sea obey?" Heavenly Father, give you thanks and praise for this day. We ask that you send forth your abundant blessings upon these, our council members, and the citizens of Bel Air. May you reveal to them the presence of the Lord Jesus in the midst of their boats, in the midst of all their sufferings, their turbulations, and in their joys as well. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is to determine agenda additions. Are there any additions for the agenda? There are none. We'll move on to consent agenda. In addition to the minutes of the June 17th city council meeting, consent agenda contains the reappointment of Antonio Kit to the utility advisory committee. If confirmed, Antonio's term will expire in three years. The consent agenda also includes a petition and resolution for Bel Air Lakes development. Costs of these improvements will be bonded and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Any questions or discussions on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Motion by Mr. Welch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next we have the discussion approval appropriations ordinance. So this appropriations ordinance encompasses expenses from June 11th through June 24th. Expenditures amount to $1,274,4261. The reported expenses, $1,240, are infrastructure costs for new developments, and these costs are paid through special assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
A motion to approve appropriations ordinance number 25-12.
Second.
A motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next, we have special city requested appearances. So Dr. Stephanie Newbold and the Director of Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs, and I hope I don't butcher your name, but Dr. Mercy Yumari are here for a special presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for taking the time to have us here. We so appreciate the city of Bel Air's commitment to the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs and to our mini-MPA program, for which the city nominates individuals who are working in government to participate in our program to learn greater managerial skills, leadership skills, how we can contribute greater to our democratic republic. And we are so thankful and so appreciative of our partnership with you and would like to take this opportunity to recognize one of our recent graduates, Princess Fenesta, who has completed all of the reports for the mini-MPA program. And we are so proud of the professional development skills that she has learned and that she is bringing back to the city of Bel Air. And thank you so much. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Yeah, go get pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all so much for your support, and we look forward to our continued partnership working with you all and recognizing the really important work that your civil servants contribute to the city every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Next, we have Mr. Ken Lee from Garver for project updates.
Which one do I need to use? Okay. Good. Well, good evening. Ken Lee with Garver. City staff asked me to come and give an update on the projects. I know that you like to get getting updates on what's going on, just because I know people are asking on things. So I'm gonna start out first with just talking about two of our projects, which is the 53rd Street sidewalk project and then the Aurora Park projects that are going on in there. 45th, Oliver to Woodlawn, we've got an agenda item later, so I'll give my update on that later. So just wanted to cover that. First, talk about 53rd Street sidewalk update. Final check plans were turned into KDOT on April 24th, 2025. Unfortunately, regardless of the size of the project, KDOT has a process to make sure that everything is done correctly. And so right now, it's not scheduled to advertise until September of this year now. It was, it could have gone in August, except for the fact that they had so many projects in August that they had to pick something to bump, and ours was one of them that got bumped unfortunately. But it is scheduled to advertise on September 17th. I talked to Matthew Graham with KDOT yesterday, just to verify the status of the project. He said that everything's in order. And PSNE, if you don't know what that is, it stands for plans, specifications, and estimates. It's their process where they take up to 90 days to go through, make sure that all the plans are in order, that there's no right-of-way issues, the estimates are accurate, and that there's no special provisions or anything that are missing. So we're in that process right now, and it just takes time. Construction is currently scheduled to start in November 2025. It will go very quickly. Once it goes, it's not a large project. This is the kind of thing that a contractor will knock out in a week or two. So once we get it going, it will go very quickly, but it is in progress. Now, as part of that, one of the things that came up is, is we did a very basic crosswalk as part of this project. It's right at the intersection. And Isley has reached out to the city and been talking with different folks from cities, the city about the project, that they don't really like the location of the sidewalk. They don't really, they'd like to move it further south. And there's some complications to that. There's a gas line there that we have to cross, so we're limited in how we can cross that gas main. But we've had some preliminary discussions about where we can move that to. Another part of that would be to put some kind of signal crossing equipment to make it a safer crossing than just a couple signs that warn people it's there. And so two options that we'll look at here would be an RRFB, which is rapidly repeating flashing beacon, or a HAWK signal. And the HAWK signal is what's been installed on the Woodlawn project at the park. An RRFB is what, if you go to the airport, you'll see there's a couple flashing lights on the side of the road. They also have an RRFB south of 21st and Woodlawn. The RRFB is a far cheaper option, but it's not quite as noticeable, but it still has a pretty good compliance rate. But we're gonna be working with the school district to kind of talk about what kind of financial participation they're willing to put in there to see which option is the better option. And it's important to note that the signal improvements would not be part of the KDOT-funded project. So we may end up doing it at the completion of that project, but it won't actually be administered as part of that project. It'll be a separate item. So anyway, any quick questions on that project before I go on to the next? Okay. Next, talk about 40th and Parkwood paving. This project has taken a lot longer to get going than we had hoped. We've had some utility coordination issues. We had sent plans out to the utilities, but unfortunately, when we started the project, they ended up being a lot shallower in several locations and anticipated. And so we had to pause the project to get those utilities relocated that had been identified. And I know you've heard some of that before. They've been relocating water meters here the last few days to get prepped for doing the rest of the project. I talked with Chris Wolken with Kansas Paving today, and they were gonna try and get out there this week, but the water meter locations is taking a little longer than expected. So he said they're looking at next week for getting going on it. And they're gonna focus on doing the paving projects first at this point, is what he told me today. They're gonna start on 40th Street, and they're gonna be doing the grading, getting the new roadway widened out to the appropriate width and getting the rock base put in place. And then they're gonna go ahead and switch to Parkwood and grade that for two and a half, it'll take about two and a half weeks, and then they'll be doing Parkwood. And they wanna get all of the rock base down. Then they'll come through, they'll regrade everything, and they'll pave it all in one fell swoop. So rather than, at one point, they were talking about doing all of 40th at first and then doing all of Parkwood. But after some more discussions internally with Kansas Paving, they decided that they'd rather do all the rock at once and then do all the paving at once, just for staging. Because once you get that asphalt equipment out there, it's invasive. And they figured doing it just once is what they wanted to do. And the folks out here in the neighborhood, they're used to driving on a gravel road, so the rock base is really no difference. It'll just be, it'll be a firmer surface than they're used to, and not as many bumps on it. So it'll drive a little smoother before they put it on there. The paving project is scheduled right now to be done by the end of next month, maybe the first week of September. You know, weather and other factors can always come into play. The ditches in the rest of the project, that's the part that was funded by the city at large. They've been doing some work out there, and you'll see some action out there, but they're primarily gonna focus on getting that done after the other project is completed now. And they're talking early October for the final completion on all the work out there. We have been made aware, and the contractor's been made aware of culverts getting plugged up on the project with the rain. And we have had unusually heavy rain events in the past six weeks. I mean, it's been great for Cheney to get, you know, 100,000 acre feet of water, and there are 50 billion gallons of water, but it's not quite as convenient on our streets when we're getting erosion and stuff. So we have been getting with the contractor, making sure they're taking care of that. If a resident does see a covert getting plugged up, even if it's not completely plugged, but if they see it starting to get plugged, we'd like them to call City Hall, and then we'll get coordinated with them and the contractor to get that addressed, because we certainly don't want plugged up culverts. And I doubt that we're gonna continue to see the heavy rains, but it is one of those things that we wanna be prepared for. So if there are any concerns, just all we need to do is get made aware, and we'll have the contractor out there immediately. We are still working with some final utility relocations. Cox came up. We had been notified by email that they were clear, but when they actually went out there to do the work, when they reflagged it at the end. So I think those relocations are complete now, but we are still, we've been working with that, and it's been the delay on the project on that. And again, the water meter relocations are the thing that's being finished up right now. So with that, I'd take any questions you might have on this project.
Well, just to be clear on these utility relocations, it is the utility company's responsibility to know where those utility lines are and to get them relocated. When you give them an engineering design that says this is where the road's gonna be, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, we send them plans to look at, and we say this is where the new ditch is gonna be. And in many instances, what we ended up seeing is they thought they were far enough down that they weren't gonna be an issue. But we had instances where a gas main, which is normally supposed to be three to four feet deep, was only 12 inches deep. So if it had been installed at the normal three-foot depth, it would have been clear. But unfortunately, when they exposed it, it was much shallower than that. And so I will tell you that the one thing that we're doing on our 45th Street project is we are meeting with the utility companies in two weeks. And the big part of that meeting is gonna be identifying hydroexcavation locations. And we're gonna probably do 100 test holes along 45th Street to look at conflict points, to try and make sure we don't have this kind of excitement. And it's always hit or miss, though, because you can check one spot and it's fine, but if they're going under something or over something, the depth changes. So there's never any guarantees in life. But we're gonna be implementing hydroexcavation more on 45th to avoid this excitement.
Well, I appreciate that extra little caution, but I just wanted to be clear that they're responsible to make sure their lines are out of the way of these roads, and they know the design. So if they miss it, it's because they didn't look at the design, or they have their lines where they're not supposed to be.
Yeah, and that happens. I mean, and that's a big part of it. Like the Cox, the last one, they thought they were clear until it was marked, and it's like, well, it wasn't. So yeah, it is their responsibility, though. Correct.
Thank you.
Always test excavations are doing. Who's paying for that? Is that coming out of the utilities' pockets, since it's their lines?
No, unfortunately, on that. I mean, they'll do some hydroexcision and potholing, but we actually have a budget that was included with our original contract to do hydroexcavation. It was always planned to be done. So there's already a budget for some of that.
Just for clarification, you're talking about 40th?
This is the 45th.
Yeah, not Aurora Park.
He's crossing different subjects, because you covered both of them.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, correct. When we're doing the hydroex, we can ask them to do that, but I know, I'll just say, we do projects for the city Wichita as well, and they prefer that we coordinate it and have a second party do it, so you're not reliant on the data from the utility company.
Well, I can see some advantage, because the utility company screwed it up in Aurora Park. Also, it's their equipment, so I think they ought to be responsible for the cost.
Yeah, and they're pretty helpful. I mean, we've had situations where we'll go out there and we will meet with them, and even if they're not hydroexcising it, they'll use their equipment and give us estimates of depth and those kind of things, too. And sometimes they're really accurate, sometimes they're not as accurate.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit more on why they chose to change their strategy on this particular road as far as starting paving first, whereas before we were thinking ditches first?
I think part of it is, in my discussions with Chris, I think part of it is because the petition project has been waiting so long, and these are the people who are paying for the work, that he felt like it was important that they get that part of the project going, because these are the people who have committed their money to the work directly. And so that was kind of the impression I got, was that was a primary driver, is getting that taken care of. But also, it's just one of those things that I think they also feel like with the relocations that have been done, they feel like that's their best prep to go ahead and get finished up as well. 40th Street in particular, it doesn't have deep ditches. It didn't have many conflicts to start with, so I think that's why they wanna go ahead and get that one blasted out.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
So one of the concerns with some residents has been, because of the delays and the remobilization, we haven't seen a change order. Are you anticipating that any of these costs will be increased, the petition for the residents?
No, I would not expect that at all on the petition project. We've talked a little bit with Kansas Paving about the project, and we've made it clear to them that potholing and the coordination is part of their project, so large change orders are not gonna be considered regardless. But yeah, the petition project, I would not anticipate any large change orders assigned to that one.
Any other questions from council for Mr. Lee?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the input. Next on the agenda is citizens' concerns. So I have four cards of citizens that would like to speak to city council. And we will limit the time to three minutes per person. And I do set a timer here, so once you start, please give your name and your address, and then I will start the clock, and when the timer goes off, we'll ask you to wrap it up. So the first person is Janet Ralston.
I appreciate your concerns, and I take great offense at the word excitement that was used. It's been nothing but...
Can you please give your name and address first?
Janet Ralston, 4141 North Parkwood Lane.
Thank you.
I have been in Bel Air approximately 18 years, at my current home 12 years. So I have had a love and a loyalty to Bel Air until recently. And I do take great offense at the word excitement. The timeframe has been very abused with this project. I am, there has been severe damage to many properties, mine included. I sent a video to city council that I believe some of you have seen. I sent it to three people. There's ruts on many of our properties that have been, I have at least 20 to 25 ruts. Some three to four inches deep mowing my lawn has been very difficult because of this project. I'm not, and that, in talking to my lawyer, I have a year to get that turned in, so I've been advised to have somebody come out, because I've talked to the paving people about it. I've talked to city of Bel Air. Nothing has been done for months on that. I was told it would be taken care of. Nothing has been done. This happened, the damage to my property and to other neighbors' property happened last fall. Nothing has been done. What neighborhood would accept that? The flooding to yards, my neighbor's house was flooded because of the not taking care of these ditches and these problems. He had water, I don't know how deep it was, and then into his home. And to say you're gonna pave and then take care of the ditches doesn't make any sense at all. Damage to property, flooding to yards, timeframe. It was supposed to be completed last December. We have been in a construction zone now since last fall with two porta-potties on our street that I drive in and out of my driveway, and I see these porta-potties. Those pictures that you saw of Parkwood Lane are not accurate. I don't know, when was the last time any of you drove out there? I was told by your communications person that you did go out and look at my yard. It does not look like those pictures. It is a construction zone, and it is flooding, and there's damage to property, and that is not acceptable. And I am a loyal Bel Air resident. What will be done to fix this problem? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as you saw from Mr. Lee's presentation, they're working on this, but I am surprised he used the switch. And so I've already asked that question of why that happened. But we will dig into it some more. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Connie White. And please state your name and address before anything else for the record. It needs to be on the record, so appreciate it.
I'm Connie White, 4152 North Parkwood Lane. I echo a lot of Janet's concerns. In particular, there's been so little communication to the residents of Bel Air about the timeline, the process of the construction on our street. We have really big, deep, open pits by every culvert on the street. And these are no longer fenced off, so they present a hazard for children, grandchildren playing there. I don't quite understand the process of paving the road before completing the ditches. Is that going to include Parkwood? Because something has to be done to regrade those ditches to be compliant with the original plans, the slopes. And that, I would imagine, is gonna have to be done before the road is paved, because the road has to be widened.
Yeah, I can't answer the details of that. I think Mr. Lee has given us a little bit of information on that, but for now, let you go on, finish, and then I'll give him a chance to respond.
Yeah. Also, is there any penalty for all the delays as far as the construction? Also, is there any penalty for all the delays as far as the construction companies are concerned?
Yeah.
And the other question I would have is, there was a street light across the street from us that was removed early in this project and has never been replaced. Is that going to be replaced at a later point? Those would be my questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Lee, if you'd like to respond to those two questions, I appreciate that.
So let me just lead by saying that I apologize for using the word excitement. Sometimes I use phrases that in in humor that may not be taken that way, so my apologies for that. I do also want to apologize for not being clear about what's going on. When I'm saying they're doing grading in rock, they're going to be grading out the ditches on 40th Street and Parkwood before they put the rock down. Then they'll put the rock down, and then they'll pave it. So all of the ditch work in Parkwood is being done now. It's going to start happening next week. That's going to be happening. Those ditches, that's when I say grading in rock, it will be the ditch grading. Now, when I was saying the other ditch grading will wait, that's in the remainder of the addition outside of 40th and Parkwood. That ditch grading is the stuff they're going to finish up. So I apologize for the confusion on that. But the 40th and Parkwood project is scheduled to be completely complete, ditches and everything by the end of next month. So I apologize for the confusion on that.
I appreciate that clarification, because that's very different than the version I had.
Yeah, and as they were talking, I realized when I was saying the ditch work, I didn't make it clear it's the ditch work that's being paid for the city out large outside of the paving project. So my apologies for the confusion on that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. That's very good. So, all right. Next, we have Mr. Martin Berger. Again, please name and address for the record in three minutes. All right?
Martin Berger, I'm at 4075 North Parkwood. I guess a lot of my questions have been answered now, but I do have one issue. My, the ditch there, I'm right there at 40th Street and Parkwood at the corner. And so my ditch actually has been completely filled in by dirt now, and my culverts are completely blocked, which I reported to Ann two weeks ago. I also reported to engineers with Garver and to Donlenger, and nothing's been done in two weeks. So we've had rain since then, and water just pours over the street, over the ditch, because there's not a ditch there anymore, and just goes straight into my garage, into my, sorry, my daughter's bedroom in the basement flooded for the first time ever because of this project. And currently, my culvert that should be this big around, you can see about a little sliver, about that big, that's all you can see, and no water goes through it. So I actually still have a pond of water right now in my yard where everybody else's is dried up, because it doesn't flow at all. And even after being told, they still haven't done anything for two weeks. The other issue I have is, I assume it was someone with the construction project, they took out the street light at my corner, and they coiled a live electrical wire about two feet off the ground between my property and my neighbors, who's got two small children. We didn't figure out it was live until the storms recently, and it knocked it loose and hit the fence, and sparks were flying everywhere. So we've had a live electrical line for about the past five or six months, just sitting at arm's length between our properties there. So feel like that's, I mean, shouldn't shouldn't have happened. So I'm just trying to figure out who's overseeing what's going on over there, if stuff like that's happening. So and I know the other question that Janet had was, who's, when are the repairs going to be done to properties that have been damaged? So.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the input. And Mr. Henry, please make a note to get somebody out there tomorrow on those culverts and on that line, the exposed power line. That should never happen.
Evergy, do you want me to step back?
Yes, please.
So after we had the sparking line, we called Evergy, and they sent out a representative. And actually, she was very excited about what she found with this, because she said Evergy would never have done this. My wife should throw a big stink and figure out who did this and have them fired, because they should be fired, whoever did this, is exactly what the person from Evergy said. So, I mean, we haven't done that. I'm just kind of hoping that things are going to be fixed and done properly. Evergy came out and put the electrical line at proper heights, which is above the trees. So it's good now, but yeah, for five or six months, I was sitting at arm's length.
I appreciate I appreciate the clarification, but we need to find out who did what, and let's get that resolved, because we should never leave an electrical line exposed like that. That's just not, that's unacceptable. So thank you for telling us about that. Okay? All right. Move on to, next is Mr. Andrew Shear. And again, three minutes.
My name's Andy Shear. I live at 8775, or 8775 East Chris Street. Good evening. My name is Andy Shear. I am a US Army War Veteran who served in the 82nd Airborne Infantry and fought in Afghanistan from 2002 to 2003 during some of the most intense years of conflict. I saw my brothers in arms with every everything they had, and I saw some of them die for this country. I nearly did, too, but by the grace of God, I am still here, and I thank the Lord every day that I'm standing by my side through every battle on foreign soil, on foreign soil, and now here at my home. I am also a father with sole custody of my two children, two incredible boys, ages 11 and nine. They're my world. I'm blessed to raise them alongside a loving woman who has stood with me through every hardship. My family is my foundation in everything that I do for them. But my journey hasn't been easy. I've overcome learning disabilities, physical disabilities, and mental disability, and I've worked hard to build a life for integrity, discipline, and service, and I've never asked for special treatment, only fairness and opportunity to live in peace. Recently, I've been fighting different battles. Over the past two months, I have suffered from vertigo, dangerously low blood pressure, 25% of my loss hearing in my right ear. Then on the 24th of June, I received devastating news that I may have a tumor that has possibly shaken my core. The thought of leaving my family behind, I can barely put into words, and I can't bury every day. And yet, I've been dealing with these deeply personal health struggles. I've also been targeted by a system known that knows nothing about me, the Bel Air Police Department. And this local government has treated me like I'm not a citizen. But but let me be clear, I am a credible man. I have worked with federal authorities, and I've helped bring down dangerous criminals. Cases so serious that files are sealed and accessible only to judges and attorneys. I don't speak lightly, and I don't make blameless claims. On June 16th, the Bel Air Police Department came to my home on what they claimed to be anonymous tip. Later, I found out that I didn't come through 911. There was no recording, no official dispatch. This submitted request, County 911, for the call logs, there was no record or any such call. That's a red flag. They claimed to canvass the neighborhood, but I spoke to my neighbors, and on both sides, and not one of them was contacted. They didn't knock on any other doors. They claimed, came straight to mine. I was, they isolated me, they targeted me, and when I was asked questions, they gave me none of the answers I was looking for. My, I requested reports, and they told me there were none, no case number, no investigation. Yet, I was denied my recall request, using state statutes that apply to criminal investigations. But how can there be an investigation if there's no case, no report, nothing on file? I went to the department on the 30th here in this building, asked for answers, and I was met within intimidation. I was questioned about my family, my cousin, whom is an attorney, and my legal representation, none of which is appropriate, and that was Sergeant Davis. In particular, used aggressive.
I need to ask you to wrap it up. It's, you wrote, three minutes over. So if you got a summation, please.
I have to read. I can't, I have to read what I say. I have a learning disability. I can't.
I understand. Can you give us a summation?
I'm being targeted by your police department, and they're not viding by colors of law. And if you're aware that Bel Air has had bad history with police officers and not viding by the colors of law, and I've asked for video surveillance, they denied it. I had to go to the extent of filing subpoena to force your government to give me those documents. I am not, I am willing to file a Section 1983 if this continues.
Okay, thank you. And I'm, thank you for your service, and I appreciate the fact that you are combat veteran. We will find out, get more information about this. I know that our city attorney is working on this issue, so I do appreciate you letting us know about these issues.
It just shows red flags if they're reporting, saying that has no case, no criminal cases.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find out.
Red flags. I'll just say, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, June 26th, I attended the CCUA meeting. We approved the budget for 2026. There was also a case of ACH fraud at CCUA a few months ago, and kind of cleaned up our procedures to kind of make sure that doesn't happen again. It's, it was under $10,000, but of course, zero is the ideal number. It wasn't, it wasn't like, I'm a Nigerian prince, send me money. It was the PO number matched and and the amount matched. But now, it's a good lesson for all of us. The scams are getting slicker and slicker. So basically, now any changes to account numbers, you need to, the CCUA needs to initiate contact with a known contact from a vendor before they make any changes to to payment information. So those were the the highlights of that meeting. On Saturday, I joined the tree board for the park cleanup at Bel Air Park, which is always good, have those every month now through October, and check Facebook for more information on that. And then I just want to, Rec Center machine pitch wrapped up this past week. I dare you to find a nicer group of parents and volunteers and staff. I just appreciate all of them who make our sports at the Rec Center so great. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've basically been driving up and down Farmstead Court, well, Farmstead, actually. And then they have been working on those courts on the, I guess that would be on the east side, making good progress there. There were some damage to Farmstead, but it looks like they have patched that all up, which is great. But I have noticed that the, that Farmstead, basically, there's a stop sign just to the north there from 45th Street, from there south. It just seems like that asphalt is really breaking up, it's cracking, and I think it has the situation where we have water underneath. It just seems like when it rains, water comes out from under and it goes up through the pavement, and I think that's causing it to deteriorate more rapidly than it should be. So whenever we get around to working on that, I would strongly suggest we go with concrete, and hopefully that will mitigate some of that issue, because I don't think we want to put those drains that we're going to put into wood lawn there. But anyway, I just wanted to note that that road seems like it's having troubles. Now, just to the west, there's another road that's on the same kind of slope that we use concrete, does not appear to be having any issues. So anyway, just something to note, but I do appreciate what they're doing in those cul-de-sacs, and they they look pretty good. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. David.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the CCUA meeting last Thursday. There was a lot of discussion about the rainfall and how it's a real challenge for our reactors or SBRs, and that's that's even complicated more by people who put their sump pump straight to the sewer drain. So all that rainwater just overwhelms our system, and it caused a few exceedances because of that, and there's really nothing we can do about that. But thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dean.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thanks. Short report here. Today, in fact, I attended a follow-up meeting for planning efforts that the K254 Corridor Association is doing. We formed a committee for the KDOT Local Consult this fall, and we continue to make progress and aim to have information to present and discuss on a project priority list, along with strategies for short-term improvements. So it was a productive meeting. Look forward to continuing with that. And then just a quick reminder, the chamber will not be having their normal monthly luncheon, which would normally be tomorrow, but instead, they're going to be hosting a mixer on the 10th, I believe it is, of this month at Napoli from 4:30 to 5:30. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So Mayor's report, I understand our city manager had a birthday last week, so happy belated birthday to Mr. Henry. So Tuesday, I also attended the CCUA meeting, and I think everybody else has pretty much covered that, so I I won't elaborate on anything there. July 15th is the last day to register the vote in the August primary this year. The only primary for Bel Air is USD 259 District One School Board, so there are four candidates on that ballot, and we will vote for one. And also then, on a sad note, longtime utility advisory commissioner member Art Tendbrink passed away last week after a long battle with cancer. His reappointment was coming up in August. I talked with him a couple of weeks ago about this, and he had decided not to be reappointed as he felt he was not able to contribute as he should. Unfortunately, I have not been able to get any information on arrangements for Art, so prayers for Art and his family. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report. I understand she's on the Teams meeting or Zoom or something.
I have no report tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No report, okay. Then we'll move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Princess left, but a little something about, she's an amazing worker. She started as a clerk and has worked her way up to, she's our city treasurer and manages the utility clerks, and she's a really good, does a great job for us, but she's also a great mom, stuff you don't see. And when you take classes at night and you're also a mom and you also have a full-time job, it's a real good accomplishment to do a lot of that thing, so I just want to give her a special shout out. Offices will be closed 4th of July, of course. It is July 1st, and we're halfway through the year. It's a quick update. Budget's performing as anticipated. Our new, 2025 new home permits are neck and neck with 2024. It's pretty, pretty yearly, it's similar, which is is a good thing as we enter budget season. Lots of construction activity going in Sunflower Commerce Park. We've implemented a lot of new technology over the past year, and staff is getting acquainted with that, identifying tons of issues and working on processes to improve. All the, all this to say, you know, there's always room for improvement, but overall, I think our staff is doing a great job, and I'm proud of what they're doing day in and day out. I also noticed, you know, in the mornings and nights, a lot of walking going on, a lot of kids playing, and, you know, that really strengthens me when I see a lot of people out in the community buildings. So let's just continue to work towards that and our goals of serving this great community. I do also want to mention the passing of Art. Staff knows him well. He was a longtime, longtime president of the UAC, and hit Melissa and I pretty hard because Melissa worked with him a lot, and I did over the last nine years. So this goes for Art, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. The first item is a consideration request for partnership with PBS Kansas. In recent years, the city of Bel Air has supported PBS Kansas through a partnership. Many neighboring cities have also partnershiped with PBS Kansas. In return for financial support at the partnership level, PBS provides certain benefits to their partner cities. Victor Hogstrom, PBS Kansas President and CEO, is here to present and answer questions. Mr. Hogstrom, please come to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, it's a pleasure. And the city administrator, a pleasure to be here again and bring you greetings from your staff at PBS Kansas. I hope that you've been watching your favorite public television station, because Bel Air has been out there, we've been promoting it and doing stories about Bel Air, station IDs, using your slogan, considered the safest city in Kansas, et cetera, et cetera. Good promotion that the commercial stations will never give you without paying some big bucks. We do not charge you for what we do. You support your station with a grant, and we simply give back, and that's what we're doing. You're not paying for the spots, because let's look at the proposal sent. The whole year's worth of promotions and features and everything we've done, if you were to put a price tag on it, it would be 105,000. everything we've done, if you were to put a price tag on it, it would be $105,760. But that's not what we're asking for. We're asking Bel Air to continue to do its part. And we will, you have a flourishing public television station. You've been doing this for many years now, several years, at least since I've been here. And if I recall, Bel Air was the pioneer city to help us establish this partnership. You were the first. And it grew, has grown to 11, a total of 11 cities. And we thank you for this support. It helps us achieve our goals. It helps us serve our local community. When you watch the station, I know you, you may not like everything you see, but keep in mind that those things that you don't like, others appreciate greatly and enjoy. And the things that you like, others may not like. That's what makes the world go round. That's what makes it public television because we try to keep the public in public television. And also, we, I will ask you to look at the stuff, the things that we do locally. We are the local voice and platform of our community. It is through PBS Kansas that we are able to provide features on Bel Air, many documentaries on Bel Air and other cities and the people and places of our viewing area. We serve and reach some 400,000 homes. What an audience to get your message in front of on a regular basis. And I brought samples of some of the things we've been doing for you. And I'll ask our good friend in our audio and video department to please play. We're having a sound problem back there.
No sound there.
I'm sure he'll get it right. Well, he's getting that figured out. Are we ready?
You're watching PBS Kansas Public Television, serving Bel Air, considered the safest city in Kansas.
And that comes on about twice every day.
Welcome to Bel Air, a city of the future with respect for the past. Only minutes away from big city amenities, Bel Air is able to stay close to its small town roots. From the Community Rec Center, two active senior organizations, five community parks featuring two lakes, and community seasonal festivals. Bel Air offers many attractions for those who wish to live, work, or raise a family in the city. Commitment, dedication, and perseverance is boldly driving the city of Bel Air into the future.
And that is item.
I'm Jim Binaj. Mayor of Bel Air. With big city accessibility and small town amenities, I invite you to visit our parks, attend a community event, review a new home development to see why we say life is better on the edge. PBS Kansas is also part of our community, bringing you safe and trusted programs to learn from and enjoy. This has only made possible supporting PBS Kansas so that we can continue to bring seriously good TV for everyone. Thank you for your support.
Okay, the next one is, it's a little longer, but it's a feature of Bel Air that we did. We produced a documentary called Kansas From Above: Cities and Towns. And Bel Air was a part of that.
On the other side of Wichita to the northeast, the city of Bel Air touts that life is better on the edge. And Bel Air is indeed known for its quiet, safe suburban lifestyle. The six city parks provide recreation and relaxation in clean, green, well-manicured spaces. The city hall, which includes the police station and senior center, reflects the city's modern, comfortable, community approach to living. Neighborhoods range from mid-century middle class to new and upper class. Bel Air is located within the Wichita School District, but does have its own private K through 12 school. Sunrise Christian Academy is nationally known for its boys' basketball program, which has spawned several NBA careers. Bel Air began in the 1950s as a small cluster of houses out in the country. It was part of the 1950s building boom spurred by the GI Bill, which financed new home construction for World War II veterans and their families.
This is at a time in the 1950s and 60s where a 1,110 square foot house was a good-sized house.
The first houses went up here in the vicinity of 45th Street and Woodlawn. At the time, this was about four miles outside the Wichita city limits.
This had been a farming area. Families like the Jaden's and the Harp Stripes and so forth had been farming this for generations. These new folks come in and they don't see themselves as suburbanites. They see themselves as a new version of rural. They want the rural lifestyle, that Norman Rockwell rural lifestyle with modern conveniences.
But that created its own challenges.
When you have a development that is way on the outskirts and there's a lot of space in between, look, who pays for connecting those lines from the city limits under several miles of field to the development? Bel Air began life as a water improvement district. It began as a, as an endeavor to provide water and that infrastructure because the city isn't going to do it. So you create it yourself.
The years went on and this growing collection of homes remained unincorporated as Wichita spread north.
In the 1970s, Wichita is now no longer several miles of fields away from a place like Bel Air. It's on the doorstep of Bel Air. And there was a real fear that if a place like Bel Air got absorbed into the city of Wichita, they would not just lose their identity. They'd just be another neighborhood. They would be vulnerable to the goals of a larger city that they're outvoted on everything.
The Sedgwick County Commission approved Bel Air's request to incorporate in 1980. The city of Wichita went to court to try to stop it.
Wichita is looking at this collection of developments that don't really have a business district per se, are reliant on the county for emergency things and so forth. It's not really meeting the needs of having a downtown business district. This doesn't sound like a city to us. And it would be better for Bel Air and communities like it to be part of the larger cities.
Ultimately, in October of 1982, the state Supreme Court ruled that Bel Air could incorporate officially, creating Kansas's newest city. Decades later, Bel Air still has very few commercial businesses.
If you think of your classic Kansas small town, there's a main street or there's a courthouse square. There's no equivalent to that.
However, the city works to recruit more companies to its 800-acre industrial park. It's an effort to expand the tax base and diversify the city's footprint beyond just a collection of suburban homes. But either way, with more homes being built here, more and more families seem to be finding that life is indeed better on the edge.
And those are just examples of some of the things, the work we do to help promote Bel Air and to get your image, promote the image, your message, and help you achieve your goals. We are asking you to please give us a grant, this time of $5,500, to help your public television station continue to serve you and to prosper, serve the community. Any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the, all the presentation and things. So I know we get a lot of press out of this. So that's very good. Personally, I think $5,500 is a good, very good price for that. So I'm very much in support of it, but it's up to the council. And so council members, how do you, how do you feel about this?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean, or?
David.
David. Get the right one.
Just, just one question on how the partnership works. Does it, does whether a city partners or not have any effect on how you choose your programming as which commercials or promotions you, you produce?
When you become a city partner, we focus on the city, the cities that are partners with us. We do things once in a while for other places, yes. But you are the priority. And we focus on you. That's what we have. You will not see a, a station ID on another town that is not a partner city. Because the station ID is also promotional in nature. So you are the priority as a city partner.
Do you give the city any editing privileges on your stories? I noticed a few things in that longer segment on Bel Air that were unclear. And it talked about, it was talking about the city of Bel Air, but it used the term the city when it really meant Wichita.
It was all about Bel Air. All about Bel Air.
It was about Bel Air, but some of the words in it, I distinctly heard the phrase, the city wanted to do something and they meant Wichita because they were talking about, I don't remember what they were talking about. They'd have to go through it again and we'd have to-
Talk about the annexation.
Talk about it.
The area. Yeah.
And there were a couple of other things in there too, like it left out Resurrection Catholic School completely. And, and we have had a lot of business development since then, which would go into a newer story if we had one.
Well, room for another story. More reasons to vote yes.
That was going to be one of my questions is, is when that was put together. That's probably been four or five years ago, would be my guess.
No, no. About a year ago.
Sure?
Yeah.
I would have guessed that. Yeah.
Some concrete pad work there that didn't exist.
Right. Yeah.
You know, part of the rule is when there's some thing of interest to come and feature Bel Air about, we look to the city to give us a call. We count on the city administrator or the marketing person, you know, to call us and say, oh, we have this interesting story I'd like for you to do. And that's how it's worked. Because we don't know everything that's going on.
All right. Makes sense. Good.
Mr. Mayor, I recall we had a pretty robust, maybe even heated discussion last year. So I appreciate you coming back. I've thought about over the past year. I, and I thought about what you said about, you know, what does a municipality need to do in terms of marketing? It's probably not zero. I talked to Nick, our communications director, kind of about what he thought of this since he wasn't here last year. And so, number one, if we're doing this just to make a donation to PBS, like you said, I know it's out there kind of discussions about what PBS shows. I don't think anybody was more faithful to their TV on Sunday nights 10 years ago for Downton Abbey. I like a lot of what PBS does. It's not about that. I've been really, really consistent that we shouldn't coercively take people's money and then make decisions about where to donate it. And of course, you're going to say, well, Emily, this isn't about a random donation. It's about the publicity we get. But some of my discussions with Nick, I don't know that these, you know, really lovely little snippets on PBS are actually turning, you know, turning a 45-year-old city, attracting new residents or attracting businesses to our, you know, to our Sunflower Commerce Park to grow the, the base. So I'm, I'm going to not support this this year. Maybe it's a slightly, not quite as hard of a no, but it's still going to be a no for me this year. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I do, one of the things, and I'm not a marketing person. I know you have a degree in marketing. I, I just studied a couple of courses. But one of the things I remember about marketing is that you constantly have to keep your name out because somebody that needs a service, whatever it be, I used to run orthopedic practice. And say, why do we need to advertise an orthopedic practice? Well, because the person that breaks his, breaks his wrist today, he needs to know that you're available. And if your name's not in front of them, he's going to go to somebody else. Okay? And that's kind of like this is, somebody doesn't know they have a need for some, a city like Bel Air, but then they think, oh, this event came up. What, what's out there? And then they see Bel Air. And then they, they say, okay, that's, that's probably what we need to look into. So that is, it's just keeping your name out in front of, of the people so that they, they can see that we are here and we're visible. But I appreciate-
It's about consistency.
Yes, consistency. Yes.
What I like about what you're just saying is that it puts us in a positive light in front of people in the viewing area, which may be moving so that they don't say, not Bel Air. They say, oh, Bel Air looks okay. We'll, we'll look up there.
Yeah. That's good. Yeah. Thank you. That's a good clarification or addition.
Well, I have a couple of comments, I guess. PBS has been in the news a lot. A lot of concerns with balanced reporting, which it's, it's not, it appears for me anyway. And then also the children's program has been very questionable in the past. And then more recently, there's been issues as well. And then I'm thinking it from of, so with those concerns and then for us to say, for the people of Bel Air, we should take their money and then make a donation somewhere. I'd rather they kind of make those choices. And for me to say, sure, we should do this, I would really want to have a very large, I would say consensus from the community that says, hey, PBS is really on the right track. They're doing family programming and they're very balanced in their reporting. And I don't think I could say any of those things. So I'm probably not going to support it.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
You're talking about PBS. I have problems with PBS too, as the president of your public TV station. But we, you have to judge PBS Kansas by what we do locally. The documentaries, the weekly programs that we produce and broadcast. People tune in by the dozen, by the hundreds, by the thousands to watch the local programs. Our local programs are also being watched nationally on various platforms. And, and when it comes to children's programming, there's nothing wrong we have done regarding children's programming. There was one time something happened about the gender and we did not run it. I mean, we, we know what the standards are in our community. We don't just put anything on. When we are aware of poor standards, we do not broadcast them. So when it comes to PBS Kansas, I guarantee you have nothing to be concerned about. Judges by what we produce, not what you see from the national. And they put on some things that concern me too. And I have written to them and I have sent letters from people to PBS in Washington.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hamburg?
I just want to say one more thing. $4,000 is not going to break the city. But just when I think about this from another angle, nobody has ever said to me, the person moved here because they saw it on PBS, a business moved here because they saw it on PBS, or even like, thank you for doing that. It puts the city in a positive light. A couple of people appreciated me voting against this last year. And when I think about $4,000 though, in a city our size, I would rather, you know, take $2,000 for the fall and spring festival each. I think our residents, if we just have $4,000 burning a hole in our pocket, might directly appreciate that more. might directly appreciate that more, um, than, than this. So that was the last little, uh, angle I was thinking of. And I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, uh, deny the request for partnership with PBS Kansas.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. David. Any additional discussion?
I guess now's the time to, uh, this is not a lot of money and I kind of equate it with what we do with the Bel Air Chamber. We give them a bunch of money for advertising. And, and so, you know, I'm just, we give less to KPTS than we do to Bel Air Chamber.
Well, I'm the wrong person. I've been trying to get the Chamber funding down every year now.
Yeah, well, you know, I, in the past, I've argued to lower it too, because I think they should be self-supporting, but that's different argument.
I tend to agree with you, John. I look at it in the same light. Uh, but let's vote.
Any other comments before we move to vote? If none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 You voted aye? So, yes, okay. So I heard, did I hear three? Okay. Uh, and the nays?
I'm nay. I'm against.
It's ten, two nays, so that motion passes and that, so that's a deny, a motion to deny a pass. So sorry, we couldn't convince a majority of this council. Alright, thank you for your time. I'm sorry?
I said, I appreciate your wisdom. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, I do appreciate your, the work you've done there with those videos such. Next on the agenda is, uh, item B, and I gotta find out where I am on the computer. I've lost my place. Okay, here we are. Um, so this is change order number six on the twenty-twenty-five Street Maintenance Project. In the June seventeenth City Council meeting, we discussed a short-term solution for improving Forty-Fifth Street from Edgemore to Woodlawn. First, Ken Lee with Garver is here to provide an update on the planned reconstruction of Forty-Fifth from Woodlawn to Oliver. Following that, the city engineer, Ann Stevens, will discuss short-term improvements for us tonight. Mr. Ken Lee.
Good evening again. Ken Lee with Garver. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about where we are on the Woodlawn project and, uh, uh, give you an update on that.
Forty-fifth project.
Sorry. Jeez. Woodlawn is one of the words in the project name, my apologies. Forty-fifth Oliver to Woodlawn. So, um, right now, the current status of the project is field check is completed. We submitted the plans to the KDOT earlier this year and we had our field check meeting with them, uh, a, a short while back, uh, late May. Um, they didn't have many pro, comments on the project. They're pretty satisfied with the plans. Um, and we're moving on to, uh, our next step is gonna be turning into office check plan. So, um, the scheduled bid date on this project is February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-seven. That's based on WAMPO funding. Um, that said, there is a box project south of Forty-Fifth and Oliver that's scheduled to be installed in early August, depending on, um, the availability of the box culvert. So, um, it may happen late July. It could be, it'll be, or it could be early August, but we're waiting for Wichita Concrete Pipe to construct the, uh, the box. Uh, we've met with contractor on site on a couple of different utility issues, just to make sure that we've got everything straightened before, we don't wanna have excitement when we get to the actual construction. We've had some meetings with utilities. So, um, that's where that part, that's where we're at on that. Our current task that we're working on is track map preparation. So part of the process when you're working with KDOT is, there's a specific project, process for acquiring temporary construction easements, rightaways and those things. Has to be done by somebody who's actually certified by KDOT to do the work, which, and is certified to do that work, uh, uh, for the, for the property acquisition. Uh, so we're working on getting those maps put together. That gives us about nine months, uh, well, at least nine months to get that work done. So we'll be getting that to her in the next couple of weeks. Frontage road coordination, we've met with the property owners in the past that have that frontage road that's near Forty-Fifth and Oliver, but we need to meet with them and get, uh, final resolution on everything. We widened the project at their request to have them participate in part of the cost of the project. So we, we need to get that tied down. Uh, I mentioned earlier, the utility coordination, including hydroexcavation. We're setting up a meeting with them to get that done. Um, there's a wall that encroaches Bel Air Heights Edition. There's a wall that encroaches on the city street right away. And we've met with the community. We've talked with them about the fact they're encroaching and that, what needs to be done. And my understanding is that, um, they're interested in signing a right of, uh, use permit and to leave it in place where they have to carry insurance. So if somebody hits that wall, it's the responsibility of the homeowners association and not the city of Bel Air. If they weren't willing to sign that, then the wall comes down. So, um, that's been made clear to them and it's my understanding that they're interested in doing that and keeping the wall in place. Um, but we, we still need to finalize that and make sure all those Ts are crossed and Is are dotted on that before we get any further.
So is there, there's something going on to get a, get an agreement signed with them?
Maria's been working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she's been working with them on that and, and, uh, like I said, it's my understanding that, that things are progressing where we're gonna be able to leave that wall in place. There will be some minor modifications at the ends where we have the intersection, just because we're changing geometry there, but the wall itself, for the most part, is planned to be left.
So Ken?
Yeah.
Uh, are those sidewalks? That are crossing the road, uh, various places there?
No, no, the, most of those lines are actually storm sewer boxes and pipes.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, one thing it seems like is roundabouts are like death traps for pedestrians. Uh, unless you're quite a ways away from it, 'cause people have a heck of a time, 'cause I know I've ridden with them and they are, you could just tell, they don't know what to do. They almost start shaking when they have to figure out a roundabout, which you would think. That wouldn't be a big thing, but for them to be negotiating a roundabout and not hitting pedestrians at the same time is very scary. So is there anything to address pedestrians, um, being quite a ways away from that roundabout? So at least people can be somewhat stable in their driving before they realize there's somebody gonna cross?
And, and that's a good question and, and that's something we can certainly talk about. Um, we do have them set back. You can see right there is the crossing. It's set back a little bit from the intersection there. It's not right at it.
I know, but you got two roads and then you're on that little bitty island in the middle. Man, that's just, I just hate to see how many fatalities we're gonna have.
Well, I, I don't think there's really, there's not a lot of do, documented pedestrian accidents. I know there's probably stressful moments. The, the beauty about the roundabout though is, is for a pedestrian crossing, they only have to look to the left to see the traffic they're dealing with. They don't have to worry about somebody coming from the other way. They don't have to worry about somebody turning left into them. So it actually reduces the-
So it's a one-way around?
Yeah, since, since it's one-way around, it actually makes a safer environment overall. That doesn't mean that you don't have a driver who's so busy worried about looking to the left that he's not looking at pedestrians and that's a valid concern.
That's why I'm hoping for spacing to give them some time.
That happens on any intersection.
Yeah, and, and it can happen on any intersection, but it, we, we can talk about that. But like I said, the, the beneficial part about it is the, for the pedestrians, it reduces the, the stress for them as far as who they have to watch for at any one moment. But it's a good point and it's worth looking at. I will say you have to balance, uh, if you get the too far away, you know, do you, do you start worrying about compliance issues where somebody's like, well, I'm not gonna walk a hundred feet over. I'm just gonna go over and stand on the median.
You're gonna jaywalk. I get it.
And jaywalk. So you have, that's about what you have to seek on that.
I just hope we look at that very carefully.
Well, a couple of other things, all, had comments here, 'cause I do have some experience of, like, walk, bike, roll and safety and the pedestrians side of things, is you cross one lane at a time. You have pause points. Each one of those has a little curb area where you'll be basically crossing one lane. So you look for one lane of traffic instead of four, waiting on a stop and hoping somebody's actually gonna stop. And then also, traffic is slowed down or calmed as it enters a, a roundabout, which is a huge deal with traffic fatalities and pedestrians specifically as speed. Usually, speed is what kills and a lot of, there is a lot of data out there that shares that if the speed gets over fifty miles an hour, the chance of somebody surviving that is almost zero.
Yeah.
And if it's down to forty, it, down to thirty, there's, there's data out there that shows that. It's not specific to roundabouts. It's just specific to pedestrian ve, vehicle crashes. But, um, I think the way you have it laid out is probably, um, better than s, a lot of roundabouts I have seen. At least it's got space. There are some that I have seen that I would be concerned, 'cause there isn't enough space. It's too small of a roundabout and there is no really good sidewalk. There's a couple downtown in Wichita even that I would say are, and, and there's not as much like clear, uh, visibility for a pedestrian or a driver. So, I mean, I'm, we've already made this decision. It's a roundabout. That's what it's in the design, but I certainly appreciate your comments about trying to improve the safety. Um, one of the comments I have about trying to improve it would be, um, making sure that we, um, designate all the crosswalks and they're all clearly striped and that we maintain them. And then the second thing I would say, or a question I might have for you, is on roundabouts, if there are any specific, um, differentiators and signage, then a regular, obviously a, a normal crosswalk would either have the crosswalk signs or it would have a push button and the lights would stop. I, if there is any roundabout specific signage for pedestrians and if that's being incorporated in your design.
Yeah, we'll have the crosswalk signs, but, uh, yeah, we, we won't have any like flashing markers or anything.
Too, too much.
Create more, uh, divert, uh, distraction. We, we wouldn't wanna do that. But, uh, but yeah, we will have crosswalk signs in the appropriate locations. We'll follow the UMETCD guidelines for the, for the signage on it. So I do appreciate it and, and it's a good thought. We, we'll definitely, that's, it's worth having a conversation about. We do wanna be safe.
Yeah, is that's a thirty mile per hour roundabout?
Um, no, it'll be more like twenty-twenty-five. I think the design speed's twenty-five.
That'll help.
But, yeah, it'll be twenty to twenty-five is what we hope to see people traversing it. If you're going thirty-five, it's gonna be, feel pretty aggressive.
So the, uh, the data on this, of the, the data on this, and this is both from the Insurance Institute and the US Department of Transportation. Roundabouts reduce traffic deaths by ninety percent from cross intersections with traffic lights. They reduce serious accidents, injuries, uh, by seventy percent and reduce all accidents by forty percent. So they're, from a safety perspective, this is hands down better than a traffic intersect, uh, traffic light intersection. Uh, and for about the same, same amount of money.
Yeah, and, and the, so back when we were talking about this originally, it's, roundabouts are more expensive. But traffic signal equipment has gotten so expensive now that it really is almost no difference in price now. We used to do traffic signals for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and they're getting to be five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars for all the equipment. And some of that is, there's a lot more electronic sophistication to the round, or to the signals now.
Sure.
Where they have a lot more of the radar detection and those kind of things and they're, they're smarter. But I will tell you, driving through certain intersections, it doesn't feel smarter at times.
That's stupid.
Thank you.
So it's one of those things that it's a give and take, but, but yeah, it, uh, it is one of those things that the cost is very similar and, and they are far safer. I was, uh, meeting with somebody the other day who's from, uh, a town in Illinois. I don't remember which town it is, but they said that their city has committed to replacing every signal in the city with roundabouts and they've put a hundred and twenty roundabouts into their town. Uh, so they've made a commitment that every intersection they can, they do, so.
Okay.
While we're on the roundabout discussion, will you just remind me, this is gonna be a single lane, but it can-
No, it'll be two lanes.
It's two lanes from the start?
Yeah, we're gonna go two lanes from the start.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about striping it out to where you, you wouldn't use them, but, uh, you, people might as well get used to it. And it'll make it, it'll help make it operate more smoothly in the short term, once folks get used to it. And there will be, trust me, when it first opens, there's gonna be some honking people and angry people. I mean, that's part of the business, but my suspicion is, is that after a year or two, people are gonna just be loving the fact that you're not sitting there at, uh, one o'clock in the morning, stopping and sitting.
It's great for flowing, no argument.
And, and just, you know, you get that one random car, you get there at the same time at some odd hour and you have to sit and stop for a minute. So it, people appreciate the flow, free flowing once it gets going. Um, but yeah, it will be two lanes. So again, uh, we're, office check in September is our next goal. One of the things I wanted to talk about is, is, uh, this project has kinda drug out a little bit. Uh, it started out where we started a couple of years ago and the initial thought was we would be do, going to construction maybe late this year. And unfortunately, funding has been such that it hasn't been available. So, um, up here on the left in this column, this is kind of, KDOT has what they call RUPA schedule and I should know what the acronym is, but it's escaping me at the moment. The left schedule is what KDOT has scheduled for this project based on the funding availability from WAMPO. And so we check, they were planning on having us turn in field check in July. We turned it in in March. The meeting was supposed to not happen until after Thanksgiving. We had it in May. Um, and then going on down to where the bid letting is in twenty-twenty-seven. And one of the requests from city staff was for me to look at, what's kind of a best-case scenario if we wanted to accelerate the project? 'Cause KDOT has a, have a program called Advanced Construction where you can start earlier and you just basically fund it and then KDOT reimburses you. So on the right is kind of an accelerated schedule as far as if we wanted to just go a little faster based on what we can actually accomplish and still meet KDOT's requirements. And so, um, as I said, uh, uh, here, we're, we just, it was at Ma, March, or sorry, May, when we did our field check review, we're still planning on doing an office check sub, submittal in September of this year, which would be, you know, roughly, uh, six months ahead of the, the other schedule. Uh, final check submittal would be, uh, February of next year. And then utility locations and property acquisitions need to be completed in April. And what, what's important on that is for KDOT to go to what they call PSNE, which I alluded to earlier on the Fifty-third Street project, you have to have those items completed. So when we have our meeting with utility companies, it's gonna be, hey, the project isn't scheduled till twenty-twenty-seven, but we want you to be doing your design right now with the anticipation that if we need April, you can do it. So that's gonna be the discussion is what, really nailing down those dates on their relocations. And, uh, I'll mention, and I think I may have mentioned this in a previous meeting, but I'll reiterate it again. We did meet with Southern Star and they had real concerns about, we had relocated the, uh, the roundabout to the north a little bit and it was gonna be over the top of their main. And they said they did, they weren't comfortable with that. It was gonna cost a million dollars to relocate the main. And since it's in a private easement, the city can't make them do it as a franchise utility. They have to pay the relocation. So needless to say, we pulled a roundabout ten feet south to get it clear of that, because we don't wanna spend a million dollars of Bel Air's money for something like that. So that's been, that's been adjusted clear of that. But, so April of next year, we need to have utility and property acquisitions complete and that'll allow them to do their final stages. And then hypothetically, we would have the final plans complete and the, it's kinda funny, 'cause final check is actually our final plans. The final plans complete, complete is just addressing any final comments from PSNE and then advertising for bid and bid letting late next year. There's a lot of different things in play that will drive whether or not that schedule can really happen. As you guys know, the Woodlawn project, uh, there's work to be done out there and trying to coordinate traffic control through two major arterials in town may be problematic. So it's one of those things that if, if there is work going on Woodlawn, it's gonna be better. Maybe you bid it and you just sit on it and you wait, or maybe you wait to bid. That'll be one of those things, just we'll have to have that discussion at that time. But, uh, that, that'll be a primary driver. And then also, like I said, the utility relocations, as we sit down with them in the next month or two, we'll get a better feel for that. But we did wanna investigate if, if we were asked to accelerate it, can we accelerate it? And the good news is, is it looks like we can get it done six months ahead of that KDOT schedule, if that's the desire of the city.
That's a hopeful schedule though. Well, 'cause I, I remember when we did Woodlawn, property acquisition held us up a lot. People weren't willing to take the prices they were being offered, so there was a lot of negotiation going on there. And we had the same problem with Fifty-third. We sat a long time waiting on property acquisition. And so it's, it's really is a very hopeful forecast. And the other thing I wanna ask about, if we don't do bid letting until August, are we actually gonna start in twenty-seven anyway, or when would be a start date?
So the conversation there would be, uh, would you wanna get started on like storm sewer, uh, installation and those kind of things? 'Cause you can do that at any time of the year. So there's some work that could be done. Um, but it, the paving itself, yeah, there's some of that that can't happen when the ground is frozen and some of the grading can't be done when the ground is frozen. So it, it's kind of an, it's one of those things that, that's what we could do. The, the reality of the world is it probably will end up later in twenty-twenty-six or it may go to the bid date in twenty-twenty-seven, but, but that, that's what we looked at. And we still have, I will tell you, we still, that, between that September thirtieth and February fifteenth, we do have a, um, an extra month of slack in there that we have that, we're, it's holiday time. It's, you, things slow down at the end of the year because of holidays, so we just wanted to be more realistic. So included a month of slack because of that. But yeah, certainly, right away could be an issue.
Ken, one, one thing I was gonna mention is the same thing, the same observation that John made was, what typically has happened with KDOT projects in my experience is, um, and, and just from a general city bidding strategy, and I've said this before, I always would prefer to have things bid out in the fall for starting the spring. And KDOT usually has options for early start. And KDOT usually has options for early start or late start on KDOT projects. And so it could be something you bid it in the fall of twenty-six with an early start of, you know, April or March of twenty-seven or a late, you know, you could have some flexibility with the start date, but get it on contractors' books, get it bid so that we're not bidding it in the spring when people are already loaded up for the next year.
Well, and, and the advantage of that too is if you're giving a contractor a long start, it, it allows them to plan ahead and maybe give you better prices too. I mean, that's one of those advantages to it.
I'm just making that comment just to understand a KDOT process.
They can order in what they want to, like those culverts that we're waiting on.
I think the thing, the important thing about this schedule is, this is a schedule, this accelerated schedule is something we, we can and should work towards uh, as much as we possibly can and, and hopefully we can make it happen. And if we find there are hiccups, we'll, we'll, we'll know about them at the time. But I think it's, it would be important to move along with there instead of waiting, letting the schedules just slow as KDOT has laid it out. And uh, and then we ended up with a, a spring bid letting and, and, and probably not started till April or May of twenty-seven, so.
One other thing I'll mention on the right away front, the, the most significant right away acquisition that we have is gonna be in the area where that frontage road is. And so we have motivated people that we have one person who owns property. They want to develop as investment properties there. And so they're gonna be motivated, motivated to cooperate with cities. So our most significant part is, is covered. Now, there are a couple of other ones that you never know, but uh,
Always there.
But yeah, but yeah, we, we, our plan is to get those track maps to Anne in the next couple of weeks. So we can get started on that process now. So I mean, uh, if we were sticking with the KDOT schedule, you know, you'd have a year and a half to get it done. Uh, at our schedule, you know, we've still got eight months, so uh, eight or nine months. So we agree that you want to be as proactive as you can.
Yeah, I, I would not drag my heels just to, to appease KDOT if we can move faster.
Yeah, and, and that's the intent. So um, so that's what I had on this. Uh, any other questions about it right now? And I know we have an agenda item to talk about here in a minute that I think Anne's gonna be talking about, but any other questions on where we are on the project? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Anne? You got short-term improvements for us?
So council at our last meeting had asked to come up with prices for over, a mill and overlay of forty-fifth street between Woodlawn and Edgemore. Called P E C the day after that meeting and we arranged to walk through the project. And we identified areas that needed a little bit of extra help, some patchwork before anything is done. We also talked about the processes and procedures and based upon my experience on Hillcrest South, which basically fell apart into nothing as soon as we milled it. My, I have a very strong concern about milling anything off of this road. So P E C shared my concern and the proposal in front of you tonight is just for putting on, is for doing some patchwork, basically putting in some the hot mix asphalt in the areas that have popped out and then putting the two inches of asphalt on top. This is not a long-term solution, but it would buy us two, maybe three years. It would also include brand new striping on it and then traffic control. So that's what we have. Um, the price came in from A-PAC for eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. That is using the bid prices from the current pavement maintenance project um, for the asphalt overlay. And the milling that is included, there's a hundred and eights, one thousand eight square yards of milling. That is the transition zones between the existing neighborhood streets. There's a driveway in there, a tree that need to be milled just so we can transition. So you don't have that two-inch bump. And then the striping or the painting of the lines. The traffic control is another, um, they had that in there is nine thousand five hundred. There's a couple of options on that. Um, for the most part, every single subdivision has a way out. Another way out other than forty-fifth, there are, I believe, three homes between Woodlawn and just west of Edgemore that do need access. So if we closed forty-fifth from Woodlawn to Edgemore, the contractor can work with those three property owners and make sure that they have access throughout. But it's that if they can get it closed, it's four days or it's three days. And if we have to flag people around, it would be an additional day, so four days. So it's, you know, not that much, but it's, there's concerns when you close the road and allow a few people through, well, I just live right there. I'm just gonna slip in and go right there. And so it kind of becomes an enforcement issue. Um, but those are, those are our two options. If we close it, it'll be a little bit better product because you can make a whole way through. It, it just works cleaner and goes faster. So that's what we have before you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Can you tell me where exactly on Edgemore we'd stop? Would we go just past Edgemore or to the east of Edgemore or?
We'd go just west of Edgemore. So there's, there's a power pole that is just west.
Just wanna make sure we're not cutting ourselves short as well.
Yeah, and that's pretty much where we would stop.
Earlier Auburn and I really didn't want to stop at Auburn.
No, no. No, we, we walked it and there's definitely a clear difference in pavement from Edgemore east to Edgemore west.
You can see it was not built at the same time.
Correct.
If you shut down um, forty-fifth, it says it's one day to repave. Does that do away with the ninety-five hundred dollars of traffic control?
No, there's still traffic control that's put in. It's, it's just kind of, they balanced it in there.
So if you don't shut it down, it's more traffic control?
They, they're maintaining to their same costs. I don't have information on how they put their numbers together, but that, that was kind of the option. Basically a better product if you shut it down, um, safer for the workers. And generally the traveling public too. There's nothing that they can really run into big equipments. But there's still traffic control. You still need test signs. You still need to put up a D two or you still need to have the type three barricades to close the road.
Do, do they think they can get this done before school starts?
If council gives us the go today, um, I believe they had said when they were gonna do it and
That's about August fifteenth or something. When they started, gotta start worrying about school.
Yeah, I, they said that they could be completed right after they paved the rest of lawn terrace near the end of July. So it would be closed, but they, they, if assuming, again, weather, um, no torrential rains, no acts of God coming in, um, they should be able to get it done before school starts.
The good news is if it takes a total of three days, they shouldn't, weather shouldn't be that big a deal. Cross my fingers and lock onto it.
So Anne, what would they be doing with the shoulder? So um, I really, I'd be concerned if there's gonna be a couple inch drop off, cause then I think that's a safety concern. Are they gonna, would they put rock or something just to smooth it off to the existing? What I would say is degraded shoulder?
In this bid, there is nothing for shouldering. Um, council just asked us to get it done quickly, cheaply, get it done. One thing that I observed while I was out there walking it is there is a lot of areas where the grass is actually grown up over the road. So having the road a little bit higher and allowing the water to shed off the road would actually be a good thing.
I'm just talking about somebody that would get off of it that'd have to get back on. I mean, it's a couple inches. So is there anything they can do to taper that a little bit? So people don't have trouble getting back on? I mean, that's my concern is.
Could you do something like you did on Rock Road where you just shoveled some rock along the six inches or so? Couple of years ago, you did that?
That's something that would be an additional cost from um, A-PAC. We, one thing that we could look at as far as the shoveling the rock on the side, um, city staff can do that. That's also an additional cost and it doesn't get packed in. So if you come off the road, it's very loose and it's kind of like driving on loose gravel. There's really nothing. There's nothing there. There's no shoulder there now. It's just the road and it's done. And then you're into the grass surface. So without doing a prepared one or two foot area on the side, there's not a whole lot that can be done. I can ask them when we're out there if they can taper the edge just a little bit.
The city did it on Woodlawn. They just put a little, whatever that stuff is, you just stick on there and then it, they just kind of smooth it off, which kind of helps some of those little ramps. I mean, even that would be, I think, a great improvement. I don't know how much that costs, but
There's no base though. There's no hard surface outside of the paving to help us. So that, that's, that's the piece that we're struggling with is you've got the road and the road is the, basically the driving lanes. There is no pavement beyond those outside stripes. I mean, there's
Let's keep in mind, we're looking at here, this is a temporary fix that is not gonna last. And I understand, we don't want to create a safe, safety issue, but, but let's not get too much in the woods about a temporary fix that we know is not gonna last. It's not gonna hold up. Uh, that road is gonna fall apart uh, within, within
Couple of years.
I guess, I guess my point of view on this is it is temporary and it would avoid cars trying to avoid potholes, which is taking them off the road or into the oncoming lane anyway, which is far more of a safety concern to me than if you just get off and just have to get back on a little bit. I think we've all driven on roads. Heck, we got one right now at Woodlawn that has a couple inch difference and it, you can get up and off. It's not a big deal. Now, if you're going sixty or seventy miles an hour, it might be, but if you're doing the speed limit.
Okay, so that's why we have speed limits?
So I guess that's my thought is we're actually making it a safer road by having less potholes in the drivelanes and not less safe.
And we're keeping it from deteriorating for the next two years until we actually get started.
As A-PAC is laying this down, I can ask them to feather that side just a little bit. It's not gonna be much, but
Anything I think. All right. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor? I think I'm in support of this. I think back to fifty-third two years ago. It was unconventional to turn it back into a dirt road, but it was a really good price and it was not, it was work we needed to do anyway when we did the rebuild. I guess my small hangup here is just the price comparison is Public Works cannot really do anything else but the mastic, right? They're doing the best they can on it.
That is correct.
Okay. And the timeline is way out there. And I don't know, that's, I guess that's the only hurdle is, you know, spending the money, but if it's gonna last for, and you're confident this, this solution will last for three, three years, two years.
P E C was fairly comfortable with it lasting. I'm, I'm not gonna hedge a bet on it because it's really difficult to determine, especially with the state of the road right now. You will see some areas sinking down a little bit because there's just not the support of the roadway. I'm not sure how things are gonna interact with that mastic that we have down there. Um, A-PAC was very comfortable that if we put this, the two inches down, that it would, it would last. It's, it's one of those, you know, it's hard to give a definite answer. It's, you're, you're dealing with natural pros- processes and nature and we can't always predict what all's gonna happen.
It should be a smooth, the mastic being there, at least, you know, for a reasonable amount of time will be a reasonably smooth drive.
It will help. Um, probably, you know, if we get a lot more torrential rains, you may see issues. If we get a lot of freeze thaw this winter, you're probably going to see issues coming up. But it's definitely going to be a better surface than what is there now. The question is, do you feel comfortable spending eighty-three, eighty-four thousand dollars for a two-year fix? That's, that's where I'm not in your shoes.
That's what it really is. It's a temporary fix.
I understand. So one thought I had on that is, and you referred to the rock. I think we spent thirty or forty thousand to turn it to a rock. And yeah, it was sort of incorporated, but they had to do some rework. This is, it's getting tore out. But the thing I think about with this, so we're spending forty-ish thousand a year, if it lasts two years or even less, if we go three, is half that road is gonna be tore out during forty-fifth, but the other half is gonna have to be used for traffic during some part of that construction. So we're going to, I mean, even if we started in twenty-seven, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna probably be close to three years for one half of that road to try to get to that point. Now granted, traffic will change and that could cause it to deteriorate even faster. But I just hate to think of where we would be in three years if we don't do this and how, how much of a pain it'll be and we'll probably end up replacing the road anyway and then using it for less time. So I'm definitely in support of doing this. It, it seems like a no-brainer. I don't want forty-fifth to get to the point where fifty-third did. And so I'll be supporting it.
Do we need to do anything to the existing road service before we put another layer of asphalt on it? Does it need brushed, swept, oiled, something? I don't know.
Yes, they, they will go through with a sweeper and sweep it, sweep it very well to get all the loose stuff off. And then they will spray a tack coat, which tack coat, which is an asphalt emulsifier that you wait for a couple hours and it turns very sticky and then it helps to bind the new to the old.
And that's all part of our bid?
Correct.
Cause I didn't see it spelled out, that's why.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just, just one final, everything has been a change order on all these other items that we've done with this company. There's, I know you're not doing the milling, so you think there's zero or close to a chance of a, of a change order on top of this?
I would not expect anything to come through. We've had heavy trucks traversing this road as it is. So the asphalt trucks are not gonna make any difference on this. We're not milling it except in these few transition areas. So I really don't see an issue and the instruction is don't drive off the milled areas. So.
They're already driving asphalt trucks down the bad part.
Yeah.
Cause they're working on Farmstead and they're going in and out on forty-fifth all the time.
And anytime you can add more strength to a road, it's, you're gonna be better off in the long term.
Yeah, but it's only starting is that, that's the subsurface, which is the problem, that that's causing the first problem in the first place, right?
Yeah, I think more of the problem right now is asphalt's just old and it's falling apart than it is that the subsurface is bad.
It's probably a little
Granted, we haven't dug down and seen, seen how thick that road actually is. We're just gonna put another coat of paint on it and call it good.
But Anne, I think your comment about drainage is well taken because I do think that as water continues to seep into it, if it's not draining well, it's not gonna get better. It's gonna get worse. So
Sure.
Hopefully it'll help that too.
It should help give a little bit of a seal on it.
And as Mr. Schmitz mentioned earlier on Farmstead, there is subsurface water in that area. We have done some geotechnical borings in preparation for the forty-fifth street project. They are putting under drains in, in a portion of that project. So, so there is water there and it's the, the more we can get the water off of the road and into the ground, the better off we're gonna be for the maintain, maintenance of that surface until we get digging into the ground and observe and pull that water up. So yeah, anything that we can do to get the water and keep the integrity of that surface, the better off we're gonna be.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dean?
I'll go ahead and move. We accept change order number six to the twenty-twenty-five street maintenance project for street repairs on forty-fifth street from Edgemore to Woodlawn in an amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Dean and a second for Mr. Welch. Any other questions or discussions before we go to a vote? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, move on to item C. So this has to do with the fifty-third street sidewalk. The city applied for grant funding in twenty twenty-three to WAMPO for assistance in constructing a multi-use path along fifty-third street from Woodlawn to Oliver. Uh, the city was awarded a grant and the agreement for this work is attached. This agreement between the city and KDOT sets forth the terms under which KDOT will administer the fifty-third street multi-use path and puts the funding mechanism in place. And city engineer Anne Stevens is here to answer her questions.
So as the mayor mentioned, um, we do have an agreement with KDOT that is not formal for the fifty-third street project. The agreement before you tonight is that formal agreement that sets out the terms and the conditions. And it basically says here, Belair, you do this, we'll do that. We'll give you this amount of money for your sidewalk. So that's kind of where we're at. It typically gets done a lot earlier, but with the change in administration, the jockeying around of rules and regulations, the changing of rules and regulations, KDOT has been waiting for kind of a final um, clearance on some of those finer points in the agreement. It has been given to Ms. Shrock. She has reviewed it and approved it to go on the agenda. So it is before you tonight for consideration.
Now, there's this cap on the amount of money that'll be spent. Are we comfortable with that cap? Two hundred and ninety-two thousand?
That was there from the beginning.
This is
Yeah, but it's taken a while. Are we still gonna be able to do it for that? Or do we have no choice because it's
Yeah, this is no choice.
Yeah, so unfortunately, like what happened on Woodlawn, this thing actually goes out the bid. We'll find out that the real numbers are, but they won't change the numbers that they're gonna give you in the grant based upon that.
Okay, and we don't have to accept the bids if we don't like them, right?
Yeah, you can refuse them, but that puts another kink in things, but yeah. Yeah, it will come before us for approval.
Well, I mean, if we approve this and we decide that it's a five hundred thousand dollar project and instead of a three hundred thousand project and we just don't do it, we don't lose anything, right? There, there's no penalty for not doing it other than not having a sidewalk?
That would be a Maria question.
What's that?
That would be a Maria question since she's looked through this contract thoroughly and I believe she's...
Jim actually might remember better from the Woodlawn discussion.
There is no formal penalty. The, the, what you create in the, in the world of KDOT is a lot of chaos, but that's more impressions than it is the formal penalty.
Do we have an answer from Ms. Shrock?
Maria, you're on, online?
Yes, thank you, Fairbuidage. If Belair chooses that they do not want to pursue this agreement, then you are free to say, no, thank you. You are not bound.
Okay, I don't think that was the question. I think the question is if we approve the agreement and we come up with a bid that we think is too high, can we void, not accept the bid?
Yes, if, if you want to rebid it to get another estimate, you may.
Well, not even rebid it, just cancel the project at that point.
At, at that point, you could choose not to pursue this agreement any further.
Okay, that's, that's what I was concerned with, if it became outlandishly high cost.
In relation to the sidewalk connecting to the street, is it gonna connect to the street? Or, I mean, it seems like we like to end sidewalks about ten to fifteen feet away from the street and then people have to take their strollers or everything else and go through the ditch to get, like at Iron Gate, there's a sidewalk, but it stops about fifteen feet away from the street and it doesn't go, so I don't know how that's supposed to work. So in this project, is it actually gonna get to the street, to the shoulder on both ends or not?
So in this project, yes, it will get to directly to Fifty-third, or I'm sorry, to Oliver from Fifty-third and it will get directly to Woodlawn.
So they'll use a covert if they need to or whatever is appropriate?
That is correct. In, on Oliver, we currently have the striped bicycle lane, so there is a safe location for folks to traverse when you get on the street. You mentioned the Iron Gate. The reason that stopped short is because we do not want to give an illusion of safety if we dump the sidewalk directly onto the street. There's no crosswalks, there's no sidewalks there. There's nothing to protect any, any pedestrians or bicyclists from the traffic on Woodlawn. So eventually, when that section is redone or we put sidewalks there, then that will be connected and it will all work. But it's, it's balancing the safety and that's, that's kind of where it's, that's why you see sidewalks to nowhere.
It just stops, yeah.
It, it stops because there's nothing to connect into it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with KDOT for construction of a multi-use path on East Fifty-third Street as presented and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Welch. Any additional questions or discussions before we vote? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. On item D, this is a change order for Arthur Heights and his city engineers here to help us understand what this is.
So with this project, the contractor is struggling to meet compaction on the roadway. This is a little bit of a unique situation because it bumps, mostly roadways are set with front yard setbacks, which are wider than the side yard setback that we have at the current situation. So the home is significantly closer to the roadway than in a typical situation if we were going through and repaving a road in an existing neighborhood. So you would have twenty to thirty feet from the edge of the road. Instead, we have, I think it's, I didn't measure it, I think it's probably closer to ten or fifteen. So that's, that's kind of the situation we're running into. The contractor was very concerned about using vibratory compaction methods to achieve the compaction that they needed, which if you've ever been on a roadside, it goes and it just really quickly packs that, that dirt down to get the compaction that is needed. So with those concerns, we instructed the contractor to reach out to their geotechnical engineer. They hired a geotechnical firm to do all their testing and reach out to them. There was a change order that I myself approved for, I think it was like one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars for that additional geotechnical report and recommendations. They suggested a double layer of the geo grid and rock. So instead of, I think, six inches of geo grid and a layer of, or six inches of rock and a layer of geo grid, we're putting a layer of geo grid, six inches of rock, a layer of geo grid, six inches of rock. So we're kind of making a sandwich out of it. And they were comfortable and confident that the geotechnical engineers, that this would be enough to get us away from the issues with compaction. They still wanted a minimal compaction of ninety-two or ninety-three percent, where we usually have ninety-five, and suggested some methods to go forward with that compactive effort and how to achieve it without the, the vibratory functions on their rollers. So the change order in front of you is for the additional cost of excavating down another six or seven inches, how, the depth of the rock and bringing in that extra rock and that extra geo grid.
So is that why this project just kind of looks like it's been setting for a while?
That is correct. The other piece is, it is, it, as we know, we had a lot of rain. When you design projects, you don't design, you design for drainage in the final conditions and not the halfway through construction conditions. So there was a big bathtub out there and then the, it was, and then we had sump pump issues and there was a lot of other concerns adding additional water to the project. So I believe that is now taken care of. They were asking to start construction yesterday and I said I would, it's up to you, it's up to your risk, but I would suggest waiting until after the meeting. I know they've started a few items, but they have not started just digging out some areas, but they're not necessarily working on this.
How much of this driveway, roadway is gonna be the City of Belair's responsibility to maintain after it's put in?
A hundred and fifty feet, maybe?
So like to the back of the existing house there beside it?
It'll go a little bit further than that. There's a big cul-de-sac that will be going in on the end and then anything beyond that cul-de-sac will be privately maintained.
Just concerned if this doesn't work.
It's just a straight, a straight road to the cul-de-sac?
That is correct.
It doesn't curve around or anything like that? All that back there and that other section is, is gonna be privately maintained?
Privately maintained, yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Amber.
Well, one question, I'm not an engineer in construction, but the, the vibratory method was the preferred method, but because you get this geo, geotechnical report, as long as it meets whatever standards they have to follow, we're, we're covered, cause it says in here, well, it's, it's been successful in a few other locations, but we're not just, you know, taking a gamble here. This, this is covered.
That is, that is correct. This method of using the double layers of rock and tensar is used in the City of Wichita when they run into soft spots. It was actually used kind of on Pedro. We ran into some soft spots over there and we put in an extra layer of rock. When we overexcavate, we always put rock in as a backfill so we can, we know it's solid and it's a lot cheaper than trying to bring in some low-volume change material.
Okay, so we do have some experience with this then?
That is correct.
So afraid this was a new thought and we hadn't tried it someplace.
Right, and the other, the other good thing about this is from Forty-Fifth Street, the road comes up and we've got that elevation difference. We're not taking it down two to three feet like other projects that shall not be named. So, so there, there's some, you know, differences and I feel comfortable and confident that this is gonna have a long-term solution. So it's not gonna be an issue. It's a concrete road that tends to bridge a lot of issues as well.
Anne, I did have one question. So all of this was the contractor saying, we're concerned with this. You didn't have any communication with the homeowners?
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay.
We've had a lot of communication.
I wanna make sure that that part is covered here. We're not just doing this to do this. There is a reason for it, so can you kind of expand on that a little bit?
Correct. Before we even started the project, we had a meeting with the homeowner and the contractor and city representatives and Garver representatives and kind of walked through what's gonna be happening and how their property is going to quote-unquote change. They had been utilizing property beyond their strict boundaries, their property lines for many years. And so we wanted to make sure that we reached out to them and really kept an open line of communication with, this is where the actual property line sits and this is what's gonna be happening. When we had the development come through the planning commission, they were here at every meeting. They came to the city council meeting and they had some concerns with screening. The developer met with them and said, hey, I'm willing to do, put up trees, I'm willing to put up a wall, I'm willing to do this. And they said, I don't want trees, I want a wall, so they were doing a wall. It's, there's been a lot of give and take. They really didn't want duplexes behind them, so the developer said, okay, that's fine, I'll put storage units behind there and they were good with that. So there's been a lot of communication back and forth. They did say, you know, our house is good as it is, I better expect that there's no damage. So, you know, we're, we're very, very aware and have been communicating very closely with them throughout the project, doing our best. You know, there's, there's all these additional things that can be done. Homeowners probably would appreciate daily updates, but that's not really what happens. So when you don't know anything, there's, there's not any additional communication, but we've tried to communicate in advance of doing any work and this particular change has not been communicated because it really doesn't affect them. So, but we're not, I mean, we're not using the vibratory compaction on the rollers because we're, we're, we're a little concerned. I know they, they're concerned if they've, shoot, when I was doing the Edgemore project when I first came, there was homeowners that were concerned because they could feel the vibrations in their house. It didn't cause any damage, it's not going to, cause it's far enough away. But, you know, there's the perception and we try and work with that.
Sure, and so I, I just wanted you to kind of tell some of that backstory and then also just know this is not normal, it's a sort of a rare case. But I do appreciate staff going to the next level to, to try to work through some things and in this case, truly be proactive to try to avoid maybe some things that maybe could occur, right?
Right.
Who knows, but thank you for doing that.
I just wanted to add one thing. Emily, you were asking about the, is this gonna be a proper solution? And that's really why we wanted to get UES involved, where you have an actual geotechnical firm that specializes in pavement and subgrade design. Cause I, I have a lot of opinions, but you know, there's people who know more than me and that's why we brought those in, is because we did wanna have that experienced determination looking at it. And they actually, they, they actually recommended also scarifying and recompacting and moisture stabilizing the subgrade below it to a certain degree as well, just to further increase the, the robustness of the scenario. So I just wanna mention, that's why we brought those in, is so if you ask, is this gonna work? It's like, well, we, we hired an outside professional for that opinion.
Thanks.
I'll motion to approve change order number two for the Arthur Heights paving improvements project with Pedro Construction as presented at a cost not to exceed ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, the call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero.
Mayor, before me, Anne's got about eighteen different projects going on right now. I just wanna thank her for her work and that doesn't, it also includes the one point nine million we spent on street maintenance this year. So she's just, summer, summer months are really tough and I just wanna thank Anne while we're at this point. We've heard a lot from her tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely, thank you for the extra work on Forty-Fifth.
All right, we have no need for an executive session, so move on to discussion of future issues. City Council Workshop is next week, Tuesday at eight, seven PM on July eighth, seven PM. And I think we're gonna be talking about budget.
Twenty-twenty-six budget, general fund. Barry should have something to you guys tomorrow, if not earlier, or I guess tomorrow is earlier. And then I would really like to get started on water code. As much as we can do, we can do it in chunks, but I think we need to start down that road. We shared it a few months ago. Redline, we'll, we'll share it again. If we just do one section at a time, I don't care. I just think we need to tackle that as, as, as much as we, much as possible, kind of like my manager's report. We're finding, you know, that we need to start working on some of these foundation pieces and build upon a solid foundation as we go forward, so we might touch on that as well.
Well, that sounds like that'll take quite a bit of time right there.
It'll be full.
With the budget, yeah, okay. Very good. Anything else to discuss? There are none, we can move to adjournment.
My motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean, was that right?
Yes, yes.
I wanna make sure I had it right first, so, okay. Well, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned until next Tuesday for workshop.